The council session meeting to order for September 23rd. We're going to turn it over to Chelsea to talk about the city's staffing plan.
Thank you. Okay, so before we begin with our topic tonight, I wanted to provide you all with a little history on the city's staffing plan and how we got here. So when I started working in Polk City, I think the need for additional staff was a frequent topic of discussion. Five years ago, we really didn't have any sort of staffing plan in place, but historically speaking, I think the council and the staff talked about adding staff at budget time, and that was kind of the process and procedure we followed. So we started doing things a little bit differently, and the city council started evaluating where the city was comparatively to other city staffs. And we came up with a plan, which really started helping during budgeting, and it helped the departments know and understand what was expected. So since 2019, back in 2019, the city employed 20 full-time employees. Since then, we've added 10 full-time employees with this last staffing plan that we are looking to complete at the end of the current fiscal year. So I do appreciate the council's willingness to adopt a plan and, for the most part, stick with the plan. So back to what I just mentioned, our current staffing plan ends with the current fiscal year, ending June 30th, 2025. I recommend we draft another five-year plan for the fiscal years 2026 through 2030 to match our five-year CIP. This will help with budgeting and will also help with planning for each department. I do want to just make mention of a couple of other things before we dive into the data. So I will be very supportive of the final plan, and we will use it as a guideline for adding staff, but I do want to preface by saying that we will need to evaluate the addition of each new staff each year. And I say that because, one, predicting upcoming budgets is very difficult, and then, two, I'm somewhat concerned about additional changes that could be coming to the city's property tax revenue from the state of Iowa, the changes coming from the state of Iowa regarding the city's property tax revenue. No need to be alarmed, but for these reasons, I would like to just have a clause in the staffing plan that we evaluate adding staff each year during the budget season. So a few other notes, I want to mention that we are trying to provide the council with additional information with the staffing plan. The very last page of the staffing plan, you will see a tax levy impact document where you can actually see the breakdown of the city's levy rate by both existing staff and by adding new staff. We're going to try to get you more and better information as we're asking you to evaluate these plans in front of you. So just to note, this document was changed a few hours ago. We did realize some of the information in the valuations section was incorrect, so please make sure you are reviewing an updated document, since Jenny updated that a couple of hours ago. Okay, so I will start the night by talking about how we compare staff, discuss the various needs of each department, and then I would like to give an opportunity to each department to explain their needs to the mayor and council. So let's start with the first spreadsheet in the staffing plan document that you all have, that's kind of a comparison, Polk City, and then it lists several other communities that we compared our staff to. Is everybody looking at that on their screen? So we do this a lot, we compare to other communities. We have used the following communities as comparisons with staff. So we have Adele, Carlisle, Bondurant, Eldridge, Norwalk, Perry, Pleasant Hill, Windsor Heights, and Winterset. So Norwalk, Pleasant Hill, and Bondurant probably aren't closest in population, but they are close in proximity, and they are a good Des Moines metro comparison that we've thrown into the equation. We're always happy to gather other comparisons as recommended, but these were the communities we compared to pretty similar last time, as well as this proposed five-year staff plan. So you can kind of see the estimated population of each community. We estimate that we're right at 6,500 people right now. That's a conservative estimate. And you can see that we have our department, our full-time staff, some part-time staff added into that document, and then we've compared to the other cities that I just mentioned.
Those population figures, are they... Where are they from?
Census Bureau.
Okay, so we're comparing our estimated population now to their estimated population?
Yes. Yes. Yep, so the Census Bureau, you know, they have your official population, and then they'll do an estimated population every year. So yes, that is where that information came from. Okay. So the next spreadsheet you are looking at, we did do this the last time, and comparatively, the current staffing plan, before we started adding staff, we were at about four full-time employees per 1,000 residents. And I will say, with the current staffing plan that we're ending on or getting ready to end on, we were right below four when we did this, you know, four or five years ago. We have been increasing our staff so that, you know, total full-time employee per 1,000 residents has gone up. Our goal was always to get close to five full-time employees per 1,000 residents, but we have really come a long way in the last five years. So you can kind of see, we took a different approach on this spreadsheet. You can see how many full-time employees per 1,000 residents each of those cities have, and then you can see an average of 5.88 in the last column. Now, I will point out, Bondurant would, again, be considered an outlier. We'd call them an outlier because they do not have a police department in Bondurant. They use the Polk County Sheriff's Office, so that is why their number is so low. But if you go back up, things I do notice about Bondurant, they have quite a few employees in their administration department. They have quite a few department heads that some of the other cities' population base don't have. So I just point Bondurant out. We did include them in the total, but you can clearly see that they're a little bit of an outlier. Are there any other cities you want to talk about before we go into kind of what the staff asked for, what the recommendation is, and then give the staff an opportunity to speak? Okay, you're all tracking with how we got here. Sorry, Mayor, what did you say?
I said it appears not, so let's go.
Okay. Okay. So we started this process off, asked all of the departments, what are your needs for the next five years? And the departments all did a great job of kind of writing up a summary and explaining, this is why I need people, they would fill this shift, or it would cover this service or activity, this is why I'm asking for that staff person. Where the staff didn't do a great job is they all asked for somebody in the first two years and made it really difficult for me to kind of spread it out. So you can kind of just see the city staff request by department. If it's a bold number, that's an additional staff. If it's .5, it's a part-time position. If it's a solid number, it's a full-time position. So then, I have talked with the departments and kind of made a recommendation for the council to kind of spread those staff additions out over a five-year period, and we do this for a number of reasons. We want to provide you with a least impacted budget as possible. You know, if we add 10 full-time positions in fiscal year 2026, that's going to really impact our tax levy, and we don't necessarily want to do that. So that is what I have done, is I've spread those staff out where I think that we'd have the least tax levy impact possible by adding staff. So you can kind of just see what that breakdown or that spreading out of staff would be. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, so we'll start with administration. Comparatively, the administration department is, compared to the other communities, pretty average. I'm not going to recommend any admin staff for the next five-year period. I think that the addition of the finance director was very helpful, and I know some of the other departments have more needs than the administration department, so that is why I'm not going to recommend any new additional administration staff for the next five-year period. The police department, I am going to recommend we add two police officers over the next five-year period. I will tell you, before Jeremy is able to just give his comments, I'm proposing we add a police officer in fiscal year 2026. One, because I do think the police department needs it, but just so you all know, we do have an officer that will be deployed around that fiscal year, and so we will be down a staff member. So I think adding an officer in that year will make sense to kind of cover that one officer that will be deployed's absence. I would then recommend adding a police officer, a second police officer in fiscal year 2029. Fire department, I'm recommending we add three full-time paramedics slash firefighters, and we would add a person to that department in 2027, 2029, and 2030. We've talked about this for a number of years, but if we were to have six full-time paramedics and firefighters, we would have the ability to ensure the station was staffed 24/7 with those six rotating employees, and then we would have the fire chief also in the fire department, but the fire chief does not typically cover shifts unless needed. Public works, I am recommending we add one full-time public works employee in fiscal year 27. I would have liked to add this position in fiscal year 2026, but adding that public works employee is, it's kind of necessary, we get our new road use tax in before we add that public works employee. I can't guarantee that we're going to add that new road use tax January 1 of 2025. It could be more January 1, 2026, which is why I've put it in this fiscal year for now. Library, Jamie has requested two part-time employees be added to the library. I've proposed both of those to be added in fiscal year 28. Jamie has asked, if possible, I bump one of those up to a sooner year. If I could make that work, we could talk about that around budget time, but for the purpose of the plan, I've added both of those in fiscal year 28. Parks and Rec, just kind of my belief is that our Parks and Rec department is a one-person department. We all knew that wasn't going to last very long. I think Parks and Rec probably has one of the most urgent needs to add employees, so I'm proposing we add a full-time Parks and Rec employee in fiscal year 2026. Last, community development and the building department. This one is a relatively easy add because we could add this person anytime new permit revenue is coming in. I've plugged this additional staff in 2027, but I think this one could be adjusted as needed. If the work's not there, we can push that one off. If the permit work is there, we could increase that when we make that add. So this is kind of my proposal for the next five years, and I will let the department heads come and speak, and if you have any questions for them, they are happy to answer those. So Jeremy, do you want to start? We'll just start with the police department. We can kind of go in order of how I have this plan.
Okay. With adding two new officers in the next five years, the goal behind that is essentially to make it a safer environment for my staff by having a second car out during the day. Currently, they work by themselves until 3 o'clock in the afternoon, when the swing car comes in. I feel like our night shift and evenings is covered the way I'd like it, but the day shift now needs more help, and that will help meet the needs of our growing community as well. We've had a lot of increased call volumes over the last five years, and I anticipate that to continue. So the end goal is to have two officers working 24/7, and eventually with the appropriate supervision with that, I don't foresee that need coming until the next, after the next staffing plan is developed. And one thing to consider, too, is during our hiring process, it could take up to a year before that officer's any use to us, depending on when we can get them in the academy, field training, and that sort of thing. Do you have any questions about these two?
I guess the only thing that comes to my mind is, with the addition of these two new officers, are we also going to need to add vehicles for them as well?
Yes, and that's being worked out in the CIP as well.
The follow-up question is, have we accounted for those in the CIP?
Yep. Yep, correct. Anything else? Good.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeremy.
All right. So currently, we're staffed, I think you all know, but just a quick rundown, one full-time person, they do 48/96s, and then we're staffed with another part-time person during the day, and then another part-time at night. So we staff two all the time, and then I supplement as a third during the week. So that takes care of getting an ambulance out the door, and that's it, basically. So our ambulance, when they're on a medical transport, the average time that they're gone is 88 minutes, so that leaves me in the city by myself, which is not ideal. And then the standard as well for to get a fire truck out is four people. We currently only staff three during the day. But adding these, we do have, as you see, a lot of part-time members, and they're supplementing that spot for full-time. When we add more full-time people, we won't have to have as many part-time people, because all of our part-time people all work fire jobs as a career, so they don't have tons of availability. So it'll decrease a lot of our part-time members, so we'll save some money there. And then I just wanted to add, in the comparable sheet, it showed Winterset, Adele, and Perry as zero. They are fire departments that do not transport, so they're fire-only, so they rely on Winterset's Madison County, and they have six full-time, 20 part-time, and then Perry and Adele is Dallas County, and they have 16 full-time and 28 part-time. So I just wanted to add that in there, because they're just a fire department, so their call volumes aren't up. As Chief said, I mean, obviously, the more people, the more calls that we're going to go on. We are increasing our calls, kind of more EMS, obviously, which generates revenue for our transports, but we are also seeing that we are staying in our community a lot more. In the past, we were doing a lot of mutual aid calls to other agencies, and we're definitely staying in Polk City a lot more for our residents. That's, I think, all I have. Thank you.
Carla? Just real quick, if you don't mind. So in the current staffing plan for the fire department, is there, have you taken into consideration with potentially Leonard Senior living coming online in the next few years, what that would do to potentially to call volume? Because I assume all those calls would route to us, is that correct?
Yeah, I would say it could increase at least a couple hundred calls a year. I've worked for agencies that have a lot of, you know, buildings like that, and it seemed every day we're going, especially with the memory care assisted and independent. The memory care, I mean, alone, I mean, obviously, the places I've worked, there's multiple ones, but I think it could generate 100 to 200 calls a year easily.
Okay. Thank you.
We had to have seen a significant decrease as the nursing home changed to On With Life, correct?
Yes.
Did you have a private home go to On With Life?
We've probably gone there 25 times since they've opened.
Okay.
Sometimes, they're still trying to figure out, they have a private ambulance that takes like non-emergent calls.
Okay.
Sometimes they're not available, so they'll call us.
Sure.
Which is just kind of a training thing, we need to tell them they're going to have to wait, because we are 911, so. But yeah, not a lot. There's only 40 patients in there, so.
And then, what's the part-time pool look like, just in your time? I know we had a huge hole when you took over, and one of the probably most striking successes is your ability to build up a department from that, but I know that's changing quite a bit, is that? I know it had changed, so given sort of the shift over the last five years, is it eroding a little bit? Is it, I mean, how easy is it to attract someone that can spot fill-in shifts handful a time month?
So what's what we're running into, since a lot of our part-time members work for other career fire departments, a lot of other departments are also short-staffed, so they're working a lot of overtime for their full-time. So our part-time people don't have as much availability as we would like them to. They're doing the bare minimum of three to four shifts a month, but then, you know, we do have some newer hires that we're trying to get orientated right now that only work for us. So right now, they're working, you know, tons of shifts, but they'll eventually get a full-time job elsewhere, and we're going to run into the same issue as well. We're lucky that we still have, I think, 13 paid-on-call members, but those members, kids are growing up, they're getting very busy with sports, and they can't, you know, meet all the trainings, so I'm just afraid one of these days that, you know, we're not going to be able to utilize our paid-on-call members either, like we're able to. And, you know, we've got great staffing at night, but only 30% or 40% of our calls are at night, so it's really a struggle during the day, weekends, and weekdays that we're really short-staffed.
Do you think we'll be able to transition any of these part-time people into these full-time positions? Do we think we'll be able to poach them from their full-time jobs to stay here in town?
Ah, that's hard. I know a few people I've mentioned that they would like to leave their other jobs to come work here, but a lot of other places do pay a lot more than we do and have a little bit better benefit packages. And that's another hard part, is that Ankeny's hiring 20 people right now. Des Moines is hiring 20 people every year, you know, so any of these people can really go work anywhere they want, as long as they've got certification. So we're doing our best to keep them happy and keep them coming. Anything else? All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Public Works?
Good evening. So my department needs are more just trying to keep up with the constant population growth that we have. Of course, everybody understands, the more people you put in town, the more calls that generates, the more street signs you put in, the more water meters you put in, all that type of stuff. So that's really where we're coming from, is trying to keep up with those type of daily jobs. One of the other things that has happened over time is, just for one example, is like locates. Our locate person used to go out in the morning and do three or four locates, and then was able to do other jobs. Well, now that locating has almost taken a full day, so now they don't do anything but locates, for the most part. Very few, move on to very few other jobs. So those are the things that we're trying to keep up with in my department. It just increases that workload, and, you know, anyway, that's what we're trying to keep up with, is just the sheer number of population growth that comes with the tasks that we have to do in a day. And really, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mike, I do want to just add something really quick, and I don't know if you all had an opportunity to review the memo, but Public Works comparatively was, our staffing levels were pretty average. I will say this about Mike and his departments, over the years, they've taken on additional responsibilities and have taken on additional people, but I think we've only added maybe one person without any strings tied to that position within the last five years. So just so you all know, the GIS, or the GIS position in the Construction Observer, those are not full-time employees that Mike gets for public works-related activities. Our Construction Observer was one of our first ads within this five-year plan, and that person is actually busy, you know, with development and construction observation activities most of the time. So you get him for snow removal, and that's it?
And that's it, yes.
Do you want to add about your GIS specialist that you have? I don't know what he does exactly every day.
Right. Yeah, so the GIS position also has turned into a full-time position. That was one of those where it was GIS a few hours a week versus Public Works, and that has grown into GIS full-time. That has happened over about a period of five years, and that's how that has happened. So, yeah, good point, and thank you for that, but those positions have grown, and the Construction Observer, we get him for just snow removal, as Chelsea had mentioned. I do want to shout out to my two part-timers, that we've struggled in that, to get folks in that knew something, you know, they'd come in, they'd leave real early in their part-time careers, and the two folks we have right now are, I'm going to say they're seasoned gentlemen, they've had previous work experience, they have some knowledge, and man, that's really nice to have. So I'm just telling you that those two guys, shout out to them, because that helps out tremendously when you have a couple of part-timers that can come in and fill those needs.
Are they summer-seasonal or pushing snow, too?
They'll be pushing snow as well. Yep, and they're willing to kind of shove their hours around during the week to help us out with that. They're not that rigid, so that's another nice thing, so, yeah. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi there. So if you noticed in the first plan that Chelsea sent out, she had graciously offered me a full-time employee in fiscal year 28, and while I appreciated that, I do not have a physical space to put a full-time employee in our work area. And that was my, I had, I think I had initially put that as a full-time and then realized I couldn't do it, and so down below, I had put in the justification for a part-time, but I had left the salary and benefits at the full-time, and that caused some obvious confusion. But what we really need is probably a couple of part-time employees. The most pressing need, so we have, when we look at our part-time employees at the library, we have two classifications. We have a library clerk, and then we have library pages. And our library pages are typically high school students. They haven't always been high school students, sometimes we've had a few adults, but it's kind of that evening position, and those, we are allowed 20 hours a week that those, I have three, right now, three high school students who share that 20 hours a week. And then during the summer, when we are in summer reading time, we are able to add another 20 hours a week during the day for those students. We added those, I believe it was in early 2019. Prior to that, our library clerk was the only part-time employee, and she worked by herself every night and every Saturday. And for obvious reasons, I did not like, I don't like to have people working by themselves, but it became an obvious problem in 20, at the end of 2018, when she was injured in a non-work place accident, but she wasn't able to work for several months, and we had nobody to work evenings and weekends, and really kind of had to redo a whole lot of things. And that's when we were able to add those library pages. That being said, the one library clerk that we have, she works 26 hours a week. She works Monday through Thursday from 2:00 to close, and she works every Saturday from 9:30 to 3:00. Raise your hand if you want to work those hours. You know, and I really anticipate that, you know, within the next couple of years, she's going to decide to retire, and I know that I will not be able to replace her with one individual. That being said, I would like to add a second library clerk position, that would be 20 to 25 hours a week, and that would be daytime hours, either And that would be daytime hours, either nine to two, ten to two, somewhere in there, maybe it's, so there's a little overlap in there, when they're coming and going. But they would share those daytime, evening, weekend hours. And it's entirely possible that that additional twenty to twenty-five hours that I add may be with two separate adults, as opposed to one person. Three adults sharing those hours might, might work better. But, you know, not only does it, you know, help provide, have more adults to work when, when we need, because we're not going to leave high school kids by themselves, but it also gives us a little bit more flexibility when it comes to attending library conferences. So for instance, last week was the, the League of Cities Conference, and I know several of you were able to attend that. Usually, we can only send one person from the library to a conference, and that's really hard for one person to be able to cover sessions and get enough information for everybody, when really all staff can benefit from that. So by having some more part-time adult employees, it would give those full-time employees more opportunity. We're fortunate this year, here in a couple of weeks, the Iowa Library Association Conference is in Des Moines this year, so we don't have to worry about travel expenses. But also, the library needs some concrete work, so Public Works is going to close our, we're going to close the library for three days, so Public Works can do concrete work, and we can all go to the library conference. But, but we can't typically do that. So really, that, that library clerk is the one that I would like to have sooner than later, so that we have some time to get somebody trained before our other clerk decides to retire. And just, we, we have a lot of needs. I mean, we, we have, our library, our community has grown, we have added employees since 2019, and I, I know I shared during, you know, some other times, that, you know, compared to other libraries our size, we are one of the busier libraries. And the second one that I added, that, you know, fiscal year twenty-eight, or later, would be the, a programming librarian. Somebody that would allow us to, probably it would be mostly, probably, I would guess children's programming, trying to do some evening and Saturday programming that we're really not able to do for families right now, because of, of the staffing that we have. So I know that there are families, you know, working families, they, they can't bring their kids to storytime in the morning or things like that, but a Saturday storytime or an evening storytime. But even just having one youth services librarian, she's doing programming every day of the week during the day, so we don't really have Saturday times available unless we go into overtime, or we cut something else out during the week. So, those are, that's what we need. Questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
It's going to take me a while for the time it takes to actually walk in an appropriate-sized room to get to the microphone.
We get our steps in here. No, it's hard to believe this coming March will be five years since you guys started a Parks and Rec Department. It has certainly flown by, from my perspective, I don't know about your guys', but I humbly admit, I think I've taken this ship about as far as I can as a solo captain in those five years. I'm very pleased with the number of programs we've been able to offer, creating new special events. You know, as our city grows, our registration numbers are up, the, the desire to rent our facilities is going up. You know, we stand in this great new room right now, that once it's fully operational, I, I, I think I'm going to have people calling every day about rentals. And also, you know, I think this is a really unique programmable space for mornings, you know, certain populations during the day, evening classes and weekends as well. So what I've requested is a, is a recreation coordinator position, that's pretty entry-level into a Parks and Recreation Department. I anticipate this individual would handle programming needs first and foremost. They would probably take over a majority of the programming, allowing current staff to work on park development, trail development, and just continuing to build out the department as well. Obviously, with two people, there will be overlap as well. I'm not going to retire from programming, I love it too much. But, you know, it'll be nice that when I leave for a conference or vacation, the department doesn't come to a halt. So, yeah, I just think, I, I humbly admit that, really proud of where we've gotten in five years. I guess I'm excited to see what the next five years could look like with, with an additional co-captain. Any questions?
I just have one question for you. Have we been approached again by the county to do the meals program here in this space? Remember, we put that on hold for a while.
I've not directly heard from Polk County senior services. I do hear from those participants that did take advantage of that opportunity. So my, my approach to them has been very consistent, you know, that, that needs to be a Polk County decision to bring that operation back in, as it was. You know, with Polk County resources, you know, especially the meal component of it, you know, Polk County has the ability to get a large amount of food across the county for senior sites, for prisons, you know, they, they have the ability to do that. So, no, I do see an opportunity, though, to, on a, on a much probably smaller scale, you know, at, at least the socialization and the camaraderie part that came with congregate meals, being able to offer that in this room during the day. I'm not a chef, I don't think you want me cooking for, for twenty, thirty seniors, but, no, I definitely see an opportunity to, to use this space to either recreate or reinvent kind of a senior midday program.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Good evening. So this week actually marks about the year that I've been here as building official. As Chelsea said, it's kind of hard to gauge what development will lead to here with the couple new plats opening up. Right now, we're sitting at about forty new permitted homes this calendar year, which is very manageable, just being a single department head, being able to complete the reviews, field inspections. I anticipate being able to take on a little bit more if those developments do pick up without any issue. As a reminder, too, we still have the agreement with Safe Building in place. If things were to get extremely busy, we still have that as a backup to consistently keep that. I try to shoot for about a ten-day time period from application to issuance of a permit, along with doing the field inspections and all of that. So as long as we're able to maintain that, I think we can push off whatever that staff addition might be, as needed, depending on how busy things do get. But for right now, I think it's pretty comfortable, so.
Have we done a cost-benefit on the last couple of years with safe buildings and where we're at now? Have you looked at that?
No, we haven't. We are still using Safe Building some, like, they're going to finish closing their permits out, but we could certainly look into something like that, just see how much, we'll see, like, cost savings for adding staff member. Okay.
And I know, through talking with Andrew, too, just for some future prediction stuff, we're going to, with the new software, try to put some numbers together with new plats and kind of keep track of how quickly they develop and fill out, just for future staffing needs as well. Whether or not that information becomes helpful, we'll at least have it, just to track future building progress, so.
It, it doesn't seem like we're, you know, with rates and everything, probably likely to go back to the ninety, hundred homes that we were doing before, but, like, have you given, you don't have to answer this specifically, just, if it does go back to that, we have a plan, that's my question.
Right, Safe Building is there. Like I said, there's a table, our fee table that we agreed to varies depending on permit fee and costs, all that, but.
And we're confident in their engagement in that model as it was before?
Yeah, I, I don't see any issues with that.
Okay.
I think we might, we'd maybe have to revisit that contract again at the end of the year, just so we consistently have that updated on whatever their fees would be, but I think it's safe to fall back on if needed.
Thanks, Cody. Thanks. Chelsea, you have five minutes.
Okay, I will wrap this up. I do just want to mention, you know, as we've been talking about adding staff, there were, there have been a couple of staff positions that we've thrown out over the past couple of years that we talked about. I'm not proposing any new departments. I will tell you one thing that I repeatedly hear is adding a city engineer on staff. I don't think we're there yet. I don't know when that day will come, if that day does come, but comparatively, not a lot of the other cities we compare to had a city engineer on staff. So I do just want to just take a second to approach that topic and talk to you all about that.
Yeah, I guess the only thing that I would say on that is to monitor if there are things that, I know there's a smattering of things that could also be accomplished with that position. And so if the spend is there, and I don't know that it is, but if the spend is there with Snyder, that maybe drives part of that, too. I mean, if, do we have, we have seventy-five percent of the work, but we're spending a hundred percent of the money on a position, that's, that's a dynamic that maybe warrants, and that's a whole external thing to, that's just like the building.
Right.
Piece was, in my opinion, anyway.
Oh, and, and I agree. Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we would have enough full-time work, because with, with engineer in particular, you get someone that's very specialized, and in city government, you have lots of different entities where it's really beneficial right now, because we get a firm of people with all of those specialties. So that is why that is not in this proposal. I just wanted to make sure that we talked about that topic a bit. I know that's been brought up, we talked about it back in goal-setting. So with that said, I would like you all to spend a little bit of time looking at this. The last five years, we've been able to add most of our staff without impacting our tax levy. And what I, when I, what I say here is that it's been relatively easy to add, you know, one new full-time staff member each year, particularly one that is funded by property taxes. I do think that it might be a little bit of a challenge to continue to do that, especially as we're proposing to add two positions in a given fiscal year. So I want you all to know about the possible impact that that position could bring, and we'd further talk about that at budget time.
Yeah, that was my, one of my first reactions is, I'm good with, I think, the stories that we heard from the department heads are relatively straightforward, and the endpoint at 2030 makes sense. We are adding two and then three over the first two years of the plan, and then one or two, the remaining piece, so if there's a way to even that out and, and push back, maybe even just a year on one of those, I think it was twenty-six, when we had, added three positions, to make that a manageable, you know, following the money addition, I know that delays somebody a year, but that is.
So, Chelsea, help me understand, how were we able to add staff without touching the levy?
Because we've had significant new evaluations every year. You know, like, there were years where we had double-digit valuation increases to the general fund, and so that makes it very easy to add a staff person.
Okay.
Well, I would say, so we had that, we've also invested, not only have we added, but we've, the salary pool has essentially doubled in four or five years. Right, wrong, or indifferent, we're a public entity, so people know people's salary, and and I do get questions on that, and kind of got sick of hearing about it, so I went through a little bit this summer, and, and I, I'm very, very happy that we've been able to both grow salaries and add positions at the same time. I think we also need to recognize that that's usually not sustainable for all companies, entities, so there's a yin and yang discussion to the growth versus keeping folks happy and turnover low and all those things, so. Yeah, I, I like the plan, you know, it doesn't really account for the growth within the departments too, though, so I want to be as mindful of that as we are adding positions.
Okay, we're out of time.
Okay.
Anything?
No. What I would like to do is put the full plan on the council agenda for October fourteenth, and have the council formally adopt the plan. The plan will have all the detail that the department heads kind of talked about tonight, so it'll be much more detailed.
Thanks, Chelsea.
Thank you.
So we'll ask for a motion to adjourn in a second.
Second.
And all in favor say yes.
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 All opposed saying no. All right, we will adjourn until six o'clock.